Sarah Fox and Emily, are you there yet?
Yes, I'm just typing minutes.
Did you get the link for the website?
Yeah, it should be all set.
Okay, great. I will invite these people and then I will call us back to order at 7:04 PM. Thank you for joining us this evening, everyone. First up is our commendations and we have high school principal Dan Bauer here to update us on great things that are happening at the high school.
Well, thank you for having me aboard. We're taking a different approach today because I think I would take up your whole meeting with commendations for all the great things that are happening in our school. So first of all, I thought I would just take a look like through my view from the beginning of the school year. And I just broke it down into several categories. First of all, our staff is just amazing. We're so proud of the work that they do. They've led by example throughout all the challenges. So keep in mind, not only juggling schedules, keep in mind the internet outages that happen that we're working through. They never complain. They're positive in the classes. And we've heard many of our veteran teachers saying that it's really like being a first year teacher for them. They're making curriculum adjustments, assessment adjustments. They're figuring out different ways that connect with students and they're making it work. And when I do my walkthroughs and I know when Lindsay and Michelle, our administrative team do our walkthroughs, we come away with the same thing. Our teachers are just doing awesome work and we're so proud of them. Just a couple of highlights with the special education department and the amazing job that they're doing because they're, they're, they're tasked with so many different things to connect with students, engagement, connecting with general education teachers, families, and making all the adjustments to make it work for our students. And our support staff, I've had the great pleasure of running SCL pods with our parent professionals and tutors and, and the work that they do behind the scenes is just truly amazing. Our guidance department having to reconfigure their whole programming to, to put everything online, all the seminars. And right now our seniors are so stressed out, right? Because college acceptances are coming out. And the work they did to get the transcripts out and the, and the recommendations, it's just, it's just amazing. And really I can't point out to one department because I would not be doing my duty or my service to all of them because it's just been amazing the work they've done. I do have to point out though, our front office team, the, the backbone, when you come in, they're positive. Carrie and Vicky, Vivian in guidance, Maureen, special education, and Amy Ciccone, they're just positive people. They set the tone day in and day out. So I think with all that, again, I could go on all night, but my job is very easy with the great staff that we have. But I also have to give a lot of credit to our students. They've been very resilient. And I don't mean just the students in the hybrid schedule. Our remote cohort students are doing amazing things. Think about trying to do school not in school, right? They're making the best of the interactions being different and the connections. And they're really, really trying and they're doing a great job and, and we're trying our best to make connections with them and my hat's off to remote learning cohort. The students in the hybrid have been truly amazing. If you come in our building, they're following the safety guidelines, they're social distancing, they're doing the one-way hallways. They have the mask on. They're just really, just really rise to the occasion and we often talk about just they're, they're happy to be there and they're doing a great job. So again, my job is very easy with everybody doing all the work they're doing. But I also want to point out our Medco students who are unbelievably resilient in this year. So as you may or may not know, when we changed our hybrid schedule, we have afternoon classes. And that really became a challenge for our Medco students because if they were to go home, they would miss the afternoon classes. So the work that has been done behind the scenes, the resiliency positivity is just awesome. Our performing arts, you know, I get the tooth or horn. In fact, today you saw the nice piece from the orchestra on Twitter and our band and our a cappella groups. Our visual arts, they're flourishing. Clubs are starting to come to life. We have over 35 different clubs now and counting, getting ready to launch our activity fair comeback from break. We had a new club called the Skate Club, another club with the community club and just trying to do fun things and I think it's awesome. Fall athletics, I know that's been talked about, but really did a wonderful job, Mr. Glarski, Mr. Tarmy and Will, our trainer, our coaches, but really our students did a wonderful job meeting the safeguards and, and having a very successful season. Student council, by the way, next week is spirit week. I don't know if Dan Howells will get a chance, but pajamas, I know it'll be different virtually. Of course, they always say appropriate pajamas, which I appreciate as the principle. And our morning announcements have come back. So it's, it's a coming back to life. And I know it's December 17th and it feels like an eon when we began and thinking about all the things that we had to come through. But again, I'm enormously proud of our staff and students for all the reasons. But I want to point out, Diana McMahon and Megan Kalpin, they're amazing work helping us navigate COVID-19. Our staff, there's always questions and really outside of our school walls, they're dealing with their families and situations and they're always available. They're always answering questions, weekends, nighttime, and they, they help me and they help our student families. And really I need to toot their horn because they just do amazing work. If I were to talk about the PCO, our boosters and FOPA, they're still getting it done behind the scenes too, just to have some normalcy for our students in our school. But the last group I'll recognize, because I know I'm getting the, the Oscars music is starting to play in the background, I guess, is our custodial crew. Really? The work that they do and day out, they, you see the barricades, right? We set up the entrance in different ways. They come by and wipe my handle off every hour. They're, they're doing all different things and, and really they're positive. They had to move like a thousand desks into the field house and adjust it round and never complain and they just really do great stuff. And today I didn't get a chance to get over there because they definitely owe pizza lunch because I can't imagine how tired they are from shoveling all that snow to get us ready for tomorrow. But again, I can go on and on, but again, just really blessed as the principal. And, and if I left anybody, apologize and I see the hook coming to pull me off the screen. But thank you for the wonderful Marblehead High School community and I do want to thank the parents too for their support, helping us and navigate. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. I found myself after you heard that you are people that you recognize, I think like, oh, yes, absolutely. Yes, absolutely. So you're spot on. Thank you. Any other commendations this evening? Sarah?
I just wanted to, if I can, just read a little thing and then lead into it. It is fair, even-handed, noble adjustment of things that while there is infectious, infection and disease and sorrow, there is nothing in the world so irresistibly contagious as laughter and humor. And I just, that is Charles Dickens. I thought it was a good time of year for that. But Dan's positive attitude and, you know, laughter and offhanded jokes, they're infectious. They're just wonderful. And, and I think that, you know, we have staff that do that. We have kids that bring that to their peers too. And I think, you know, we hear a lot about 2020 and we can't wait for 2021. But if there's anything good that's come out of this year, it's really how, you know, whether it's a student kind of picking up their peer or a teacher seeking it out or, you know, teachers doing it to their peers or administrators, we've helped each other. And I think that that really shows the strength of us as a community and I think that that's a positive that came out of this year.
Absolutely. Thanks, Sarah. Anybody else this evening?
Well, I would like to say, I really appreciate, you know, Dan's right. We, we could take up most of the meeting tonight with commendations with what everybody's accomplished and Dan's being all too modest and I would second what Sarah just said. You know, Dan's leadership is infectious, his positive attitude, his approach and his tweets. And I'll say it again, as I've said before, if people don't follow Dan on Twitter, I learn more about what's going on at the high school. Dan is tweeting about, you know, basketball practice. He's tweeting about what's going on in cooking classes. He's tweeting about what's going on and everything at the high school and it's just, it's just great to see and it's, it has been. It's been a challenging fall semester for everybody, but there is just so much positivity that you can see and the challenges that everybody's up against. And so, you know, thanks Dan to you for being the leader of that from the high school level. And as you recognized, everybody that works with you, whether it's the administrators, teachers and right down to the custodians that are, that are doing everything. And, you know, my commendation also goes out to everyone, you know, as we go into the holiday break, that everybody can have, you know, happy holidays and have a nice break with their families and I'm always sort of a glass is half full person. And that when we come back in January, hopefully things will be moving in the right direction and we'll, we'll do the best we can to, to keep providing the best education that we can for all the students in, in the Marblehead district. So, thank you.
Thanks, David. All right. I think that leads us to Dan Howells, our student representative. Dan, if you want to unmute yourself, welcome.
Hello. It's good to see everyone. So today we had a snow day, I think. It was a bit of a sigh of relief for students and teachers. It was nice to have the day off. So the junior class of 2022 is selling their class clothes. The class of 2023 is doing a fundraiser with Double Good Gourmet popcorn. So both, both these grades are working to try to build funds for themselves, even though we can't do some of the normal fundraisers. Number of winter sports have begun with, of course, changes to how they are run, but I think students are definitely happy that they are happening at all. And as Mr. Bauer was mentioning, a number of clubs have returned at this point for the school year. I think it took, it was good that we took some time so that they could adjust and really, you know, come up with plans of how they were going to run. And they've all, and a number of them have started now. Seniors have, some seniors who have applied ED to schools are now hearing back. So congratulations to them and to everyone who's applying right now. The coral department has, over the past four weeks, done a, their holiday video series. So they've put out a song a week for the past four weeks leading up to the winter break. And the orchestra and band has also put out videos, which has been nice. This is the time when the, the winter concert would normally be happening. So having these videos has been great. I'd also like to, you know, shout out the, the music department teachers because they've all had to learn about video editing software because they've been putting these videos together for us. So I can only imagine how much time they've put into that. So we really appreciate it. And also next week, we are having another spirit week. As Mr. Bauer mentioned, it's pajama themed, which I think should be nice for everyone in the remote, in the remote three-day week next week. Another example of, no, so this actually is a new spirit week. We don't, we hadn't normally had one before the winter break. But I think it's a, it's a great chance for us to-
Sorry, I'm having trouble.
I think it's been a great chance for us to, you know, remain engaged and it was a smart decision from the student council to, you know, pick this time to hold the spirit week.
Great. Thank you, Dan. And I actually left out one commendation that I can't believe I forgot. And that is for Dan Howells. He officially became an Eagle Scout after his project that helped out the new school with a sensory room. So congratulations, Dan.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Dan. It's a huge honor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That leads us, sorry, that leads us to public comment. If anyone that would like to make public comment, please feel free to raise your hand using that function. Give people a moment. Okay, Jennifer Eaton, please state your name and address for the record. You're muted, Jen.
Sorry about that.
Hi. Hi, welcome.
I'm Jennifer Eaton, 126 West Shore Drive. So I just had a couple of things about, you know, going remote. I'm actually calling in from work tonight from ICU. So obviously the going remote has a, you know, special presence for me. I know Dr. Bucky, in your email, you talked about the three reasons for going remote, which were virus presence, operational strain and community threshold. So just about those three things. You know, I wish with the community threshold, there was like an actual number for that, you know? I know the numbers are definitely going up in the community, but there's never been an actual percentage. Like if we hit this number, that's why we're going remote. And I know that COVID is obviously scary. Obviously being a nurse, I understand that, but you know, I just, I know that Marblehead is still not in the highest risk community. So while our numbers are increasing, you know, we're not that high risk community quite yet. And for kids like my own, who really need to be in person and who thrive in that environment, you know, I think we really need to look at that. And where, you know, the other things were virus presence and operational strain, meaning that, you know, too many people in the school system are contracting COVID or that the teachers are getting sick. That hasn't really been an issue yet. So, you know, the transmission in the schools hasn't been a problem. I, I know that if teachers are contracting COVID and they need to be out, that still would affect us in a remote setting. Because if we need subs, you still would need subs in a remote setting as well. So, you know, going remote isn't, you know, easy because if, for instance, my child who's on an IEP, if we go on the full remote schedule, like it seems like we would be going into the week of September, her whole IEP is disrupted. She won't be getting her secret services in that setting. And I know her, Ashley Leeman at Vets is doing an excellent job, but they have to reevaluate her entire schedule. And if it goes back to the way it was in September, her secret services aren't getting met, which means we have to completely reevaluate everything. And it's a big deal. You know, next week it's only the most high needs children and she doesn't qualify for that. But yet she gets a lot of secret services. So it's a big deal. You know, it's going remote isn't just this like willy-nilly thing. And it's, it's hard for everybody, not just special education kids, it's for everybody. So I just ask you to really look at this, you know, transmission in the schools hasn't happened. And I understand that COVID scares everyone. But schools are safe. It's been proven to be safe. There's a researcher, Joseph Allen. He works for the Harvard Department, Schools for Health. And he's, this is his life's work. So I just, as a nurse, I've seen COVID, it's scary. I understand. I understand the fear in the community. But going remote is affecting our kids and it's affecting our community. So it's not the answer. And I know the teachers are scared. I know the community is scared. I understand. But we have to look at all the wonderful things that you guys have done to keep our school safe. So just thank you.
Thanks, Jen. All right. There's nobody else. So I will move us along to our minutes. We accidentally put the November 5th minutes on there, but we'd already approved those. So they, I believe, should be up on the website. If not today, hopefully within the next couple of days, but I know Lisa's been hard at work on that. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes from November 11th, 2020?
They moved.
Sarah moved. Make it a second.
Second.
Megan, second. Did anybody have any additions or questions on those?
I had two little amending things. One is simple. Dr. Benedetto is doctor. And then I just wanted to point out, because I think it, it's written correctly as it was said in the meeting, but I know I've gotten some feedback. It, that, that, there was a large effort put into organizing lunches and drop-offs and all of that for the teachers. And the PTOs helped with that at some schools, but that was largely organized by private citizens separately from the PTOs. I know at one school at least, the PTOs joined forces after that organization had happened. But that was spontaneously run by just people in the community that were thankful.
All right. Thanks, Sarah. I've written those down too. Okay. So if nobody else has anything, I will call for a roll call vote. Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
And David Harris?
Yes.
All right. Those pass. Five to zero. Okay, John, that leads us to your superintendent's report with teaching and learning updates and then a winter sports season discussion.
Sure. A lot has been happening. The Board of Elementary and Secondary Education met this week and provided some guidance to schools. And I have talked about this in the past, that this guidance would probably have been most helpful in June, July or August, when we were directed to do this at the local level. And so coming in, in December and saying, here are the minimum requirements. I certainly support them and they make good sense, but they come after the fact. After superintendents were asked to get their facilities and technology and transportation and time on learning, doing MOAs with unions. So to come in now and say, here are the parameters are challenging. The good news is we're in a very good place. So what the board voted on was first that every student must have at least one daily live check-in with an adult. And so that's happening at the high school. That's happening at the middle school, at Village. NAN has been doing incredible work with the principals. They actually met today to talk about this. The second point that the new guidance or regulations now, it's not even guidance, which makes it trickier. And I think I said this to Sarah earlier today, it is as though they said, okay, you need to plan a trip to Hawaii this year. And then came back and said, oh, by the way, everybody needs to fly first class and do a stopover in London. So the trip would be differently planned knowing those two. And so the second thing that they added in terms of regulations is every student must have access to synchronous instruction every day. And again, across the district, we are meeting that with some areas where that needs to be refined or expanded. And then the third is every student must have at minimum 35 hours of live instruction. And at the elementary level, I think it's two hours difference. At the high school, it's two hours difference. I think Village had a three-hour difference. And then the middle school had input a different schedule when they collected this data in November and is already meeting that. And so when I say a two-hour difference, people, that isn't a two-hour a day difference, but that's two hours over the course of 10 school days. And so I know NAN in working with the building principals has identified things like shaving moments, minutes off of passing time or increasing minutes in an end of day meeting or a morning meeting for those structured learning time. And so several decisions that we have made, and I'm going to have to say, with things moving at the speed of light, I have not been the best at getting out ahead of information with every stakeholder group that wants it first. And so I, on Monday, the reopening committee met and we established some information for what snow days would look like and what the week after the return from holiday break might look like. Remembering, understanding, appreciating that teachers have said, it's really challenging to get information at the same time that students and parents get that information. It would be nice so that if somebody reaches out to us, a parent and says, oh, I hear you're going to do this, that we knew it. So checkmark for the new superintendent, he got that out to teachers, but didn't get it out to school committee. So you all start to get calls and you're like, So you all start to get calls and you're like, uh-oh, what, what's going on? And so I acknowledge that with the three days remote, um, needed to get that to school committee first, the week after. And I want to speak to the week after, that is an anticipatory in that the numbers in Marblehead are not trending in the right direction. And when they come out tomorrow, the decision to go remote for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week will make sense. And so we are working with the Board of Health to say, okay, if the threshold for the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, leading into the holiday break, moved us to remote, then that should be the threshold for returning in January. So let's say the number tomorrow is four. I, I'm using four because yesterday, or last week was 3.85. So let's say that's four. If it's still four, it would seem to make sense that that first week back in January were remote. And so that will be seen likely as a good decision by most. If it's seven, it will seem like a very good decision. But if it's two, then we need to revisit that. And the reopening committee discussed that the pivots for families are hard in terms of planning work schedules and childcare schedules. And knowing that you're going to be in remote gives you the opportunity to plan better than if you're anticipating being in person and that's taken away. And I will be the first to say, as I have said myriad times, no one is right and no one is wrong. What I just said might resonate for many of our families and for others, it's the exact opposite of what they need. It might be easier to anticipate being in person and go to remote, uh, for them. So that's, uh, where we're at on teaching and learning and models. I would just say, um, as a clarifier, the lever to go remote or hybrid is a central office reopening committee, superintendent's health advisory committee decision that we make collaboratively. Once that lever is pulled, the schedules and the day to day operations, NAN and I leave to the building principals. And so I know there's been some conversation, okay, we're going remote Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday next week and we're hearing that it's not the same remote schedule that we began the year with. That doesn't make good sense to us. That's a building level decision for building principals, working with their faculty, making those decisions about where they are in terms of teaching and learning, what makes, uh, the most sense. And so we afford that flexibility that it isn't always going to be the same schedule. And it makes good sense to me why Dan Bauer at the high school or Matt Fox at the middle school that have the fully remote Wednesdays now, might look at Monday and Tuesday next week as challenging to implement one schedule and then jump back to this Wednesday schedule that we're in. So that's kind of an update on teaching and learning. Uh, somebody did ask me about cameras in the classroom and I just wanted to touch on that. Mr. Bauer, as would not surprise anyone, did a great analysis of the teachers that were, uh, employing, uh, cameras in the classrooms. And that, uh, ranged from the Poly system that we tried, the Jabber system that we tried and the Owl. And he collected feedback, many positive things about connectivity and ease of use and being able to have the asynchronous, uh, uh, or the at home students in, no surprises, connectivity issues, inability to hear, teachers not feeling that they were able to attend, uh, to the remote learners or the students that were live streaming in. Dan has put it out there and with my full support, that anybody that wants a camera, wants to do this live streaming, that we will purchase that technology for them. And I think Dan shared with me, he has one or two, uh, teachers that have, uh, approached him. Um, so there were some successes and some challenges, uh, with the live streaming. We're not going to be able to overcome the infrastructure issues we have. And I, I think if you ask any high school student or parent family right now, did the internet go down at the high school or were there connection challenges this week? We would probably have a 90 to 95% uh, affirmation rate. And so, um, we do have a new director of technology onboard and he has already, uh, started to try to troubleshoot, uh, some things and to increase bandwidth and, uh, connectivity. So, um, it's a work in progress, but it wasn't something that was forgotten. It wasn't something that just got, uh, talked about at two meetings. And I know Dan continues to work with, uh, his teachers and to make that, uh, accessible to those who want to use it. And so I'll pause and see if there are questions about a teaching and learning update.
Sarah?
So, um, I do have some, some questions and it's not schedule based, it's more of a policy of, my understanding is if we go to a period of full remote, um, the policy would be that we would be fully synchronous for all. And there would be no reason to cohort out because the cohorts are due to spacing. And if we're remote, there's no spacing issue. So in my mind, there's absolutely no reason that, um, we should be cohorting out these students in a student, we don't, we're not bringing them together. Because the other policy was that we had to pace everybody. You know, the remote kids had to be paced to stay with remote, our cohort A and B, so that there could be movement at any time if things happen. So we've already preemptively paced everybody, so there shouldn't be that cohort A is a week ahead of cohort B and that's the issue. So I, I would like to understand more why some, some will be getting a teacher's, um, will be joining cohorts and therefore kids will get a live instruction every single day. And, um, some won't.
Yeah. Sarah, I know that you participated in teaching and learning, so you probably have more of the inside baseball for the elementary. And so when I speak to this, it's never going to be a pre K to 12, uh, discussion because our fully remote students, I don't think you're saying that our cohort C students should move in with cohort A and B, or is that what you're asking?
No, no cohort C, but there's, like, um, for instance, a teacher who teaches chemistry, AP or whatever, um, would, would have a cohort A and a cohort B. Why are we not joining them together? And so that all those students can, can actually maybe have an opportunity to make up some of the ground because we've been co-horted out.
I'm not sure I'm following that question, Sarah, that cohort A and B would be in different.
So in my mind, there's absolutely no reason to cohort out. I mean, if we were, if we were remote for just three days, then that would be one thing, but, um, there's no reason to keep cohort A and B separate. Why are we not joining them into a class? So that if you were going to take history on C block, at C, whatever time C block runs that day, you would get on your history teacher Zoom cohort A and B and you would just have a virtual lesson.
So I believe that, uh, I believe that just, um, next week, Monday, Tuesday is, is the remote but functioning in hybrid. If we end up actually being remote for the week of one, four, it's a fully remote schedule.
Where the cohorts are combined.
Where cohorts are combined. So we, we, so we are just talking about the, the Monday and Tuesday of next week where they, where the hybrid, where cohort A will, will be on and then on Monday cohort B will be on on Tuesday. And I think Sarah's a question.
So if we extend anywhere beyond next week, it will, there will be no cohort A and B. They'll have that label, but they will be joined together and taught at one time. So every student will have a full day with their, with their educators.
That is my understanding, Sarah, yes.
That is my understanding from reopening as well.
I just follow.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that at first.
Can, can I just follow on from that though? Cause I, I guess I'm having a hard time understanding why even next week, we are in cohorts when we're remote, especially for the elementary kids. Um, so I guess I'm just not understanding that piece. And it's, I think at least reading, you know, the principal's email for my third grader, it's that Monday and Tuesday are basically a hybrid schedule in remote, but then Wednesday is a full remote schedule. So it's just really, I'm confused as a parent, to be honest. So if you could just walk me through that.
I'm gonna ask NAN in working with teaching and learning for the elementary to walk you through that.
Thank you, Dr. Bucky. Um, it's actually pretty easy to explain. We, um, initially, when we were thinking about going remote for those three days, all of the leaders, um, and I had the conversation around going back into the full remote schedules that we started with. However, our, our teaching and learning has broadened and deepened so much since we started that, uh, we have a lot of different services happening. We have hired three additional tutors. So their schedules didn't, uh, would not align. So we needed some time to create schedules and vet them through our special education teachers. Because we have, um, all kinds of special education services that are built in a day. And, um, to just simply push, you know, take the two cohorts and put them together, it, it just, it's not as easy as it sounds now that we have more learners with different services in place. So we needed a couple of days to really get that right and have Dr. Oxford and his staff vet those schedules to make sure that everyone would be in compliance with the services. And those services need to be aligned to specific content areas. So we can't have content happening in two different classrooms at the same time because the special education provider needs to be in both spaces. So, um, we really wanted to get it right. And we took, um, next week as that opportunity, seeing that it was just, it's just two and a half days. Um, so that's, that's the reasoning behind that primarily.
Did you say, did I hear you incorrectly? Did you say our threshold would be four?
I did not.
Oh, okay. Do we have a threshold?
I.
Been asked for a lot.
Yeah, I said I'm working with Andrew Petty at the Board of Health. And if it were four for this coming week and we're in hybrid Monday, Tuesday, or we're in remote Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, that when we get to January, if that number is seven, then that would make good sense why we're continuing with remote. But if that number were two, then we would need to revisit that. And again, reopening is meeting every week.
Emily?
Um, my question about the threshold is, well, if it's 3.8, what it was last week and we were hybrid this week, does that mean we will go hybrid January 4th?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So as long as that, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah.
And then also, um, well, no, I guess that's it for now.
Megan, did you have something else?
So yeah, just, I guess this is another piece that I'm trying to wrap my head around is setting that parameter, I think is important. You know, Sarah just mentioned it too, like we've kind of said all along that we're, there would be a parameter to get us into remote and then, you know, to get us back out of remote too. So I think being very clear about what that is. And granted, we know that things change over time. So if something changes, fair enough. But at least as a starting point, what is our parameter to get us into a remote setting? And, and being very clear about that. So that again, parents and teachers and the community can plan accordingly based on the information that comes out. So, and a follow-up question to that is, who actually sets that parameter? Is it, do we follow the state, um, kind of red, yellow, green? Um, you know, standard that they've put out? Is it the Board of Health that makes the decision? Is it purely the reopening committee? If we can just clarify that, so everyone's on the same page, that would be helpful.
Megan, I so appreciate that because it is right in line with, everyone thinks it's a simple threshold decision. And DESI turned that on its ear when they said, the governor's red designation no longer means that you shouldn't be in school. You should look at other factors as well. And so in my conversations with superintendents in like Chelsea or Revere, who are like, we're red as red can be and they're telling us we should be in school. So I imagine if Marblehead were ever in the red, that there would still be people that would wonder why. Because DESI has weighed in that even red communities can be in hybrid. So I get that it sets a parameter, but I don't think that it's going to solve each of the problems.
And that's fine if we don't use that state stoplight coding, that's fine. But I do think we need to have more, we, we do, we do need to set a parameter to, so that everyone can plan accordingly. Because right now it feels like it's, I think it should be based on fact and science, on what is gonna put us into a remote setting. Because it does have large scale impacts on everybody. And I'm just trying to see how can we get to that point.
So I think that, um, you know, I, I, I understand what Megan's asking for, but I think, you know, I can speak for the conversations that go on in reentry. Um, and that, that it, that it is based on fact and that it isn't necessarily one threshold. Um, you know, we hit one point, but that, you know, Deanna McMahon does a lot of talking in there. Um, and, and, and when we bring something up, it's oftentimes referred back to her of, okay, Deanna, can you, you know, inform us about the, the, you know, health pieces underneath whatever the subject is that has just come up? Um, so, you know, I, I, I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea to have a, a threshold. I think it's a good idea, but that it sort of, it's more complex than it just sort of is at the saying like, oh, we should have a threshold.
And we do align with the Marblehead Board of Health and Helene sits on reopening. And we often ask her to take things back to the Board of Health. And Andrew Petty and I are on speed dial, I think at some points. And Deanna works with the nurse, uh, for the Board of Health. And so it isn't just a singular variable decision that goes into it.
Sarah?
I like the idea on metrics, but I will say, I think a threshold is hard in some ways in that for instance, um, by the way, the state did release the numbers. I know we didn't post them in town yet, but we're, this week we're at 4.32, um, for Marblehead as of the state releasing this evening. Um, but, but that threshold's hard in, when you just look at it by itself. Because for instance, if the threshold, if, if our percentage was eight percent, but we had empty hospitals, no one, our, our ICUs were wide open, we had plenty of events, then that would be health-wise stable to keep the schools open in my mind. It versus, we could have a rate of three percent and we could have our hospitals maxed out with only two beds open. Um, and, and that's a much different situation. Because at the end of the day, that's what's in my mind needs to drive this. Because if we, that gives us an idea of how sick people are getting. Um, not that I want anybody to get sick, but if we can't give sick people a bed or to give people a vent when they need it, then we need to start shutting things down. And that's just my mind, based on the science. But that's where I think that, that number of at five percent will close, at this percent will close. Because I do think it does need to factor in hospital bed availability, vent availability and ICU availability. So for local hospitals, not, and when they say North Shore, that encompasses way to, I mean, some of those North Shore hospitals encompassing that are an hour away. Um, unfortunately, we have two hospitals right now, we have Salem and Beverly. So I think we have to try to look at those more closely.
And Sarah, I don't, you know, I don't disagree with that. And I'm not saying it has to be a parameter, but maybe it's a set of parameters, like you said. But just to have some guidelines that we're working towards and that everybody knows what the goalpost is. Cause I don't, I don't know what the goalpost is. Um, and the other thing, just completely to play devil's advocate, anyone can disagree with me if you want. But even as our numbers are rising, that percentage positivity number is rising, we are not seeing the spread in schools. Our children are safe in our schools because of, because of what we've put in place to keep them safe.
Absolutely. But I do think, you know, as our numbers are rising, we are seeing increasingly more students who are in quarantine. Um, in student, uh, teachers who are in quarantine, teachers having trouble um, with their daycare providers. So it, it isn't necessarily that there, it, it isn't, it is amazing and, and a testament to mitigation practices that we are not seeing spread in schools. Um, however, it again, isn't quite just that simple. Emily, I know you've had your hand up.
Um, I was gonna say what Megan said about we need more than just the percentage. There has to be other, you know, points that get us to go remote. And I was going to say transmission in the schools. But if there are other things happening that we don't know about, like kids in quarantine or people not being able to show up to work for various reasons. Then again, it's, we see the numbers and it says there's no transmission in school and everyone should be in school. So I guess we need just clear information everybody to, so that we know that these, why these decisions are being made. Right? Because we went remote next week, or we're going remote next week, but the numbers weren't out yet. So we don't know why we're going remote next week. And if we go remote in January, we still, unless we know exactly why, people are always going to question it. So I guess we just need to back up everything we do. So if teachers are missing school for various reasons, because they're sick or daycare, or just show us a list of all the teachers so we can see that we don't have enough support. Or if there's all these kids out for whatever you can give us, like whatever is allowed to be seen. If we see that, then these decisions, I think, make more sense to us.
Well, I think, yeah, and just to follow on from that, Emily, one of the things we talked about in October, um, was using that reentry committee more. And I'm so glad that we're doing that. But I guess in my mind, the way it would work is that the reentry committee would kind of vet through all the options and come up with a recommendation. And then that is what would feed up to the school committee. And not to say that we would second guess anything that you would recommend, but also that we're having these conversations. And those reasonings, as Emily just talked about, everyone's aware of them, including the community and the families, so that they understand like, okay, that makes good sense. And then it actually makes everybody's life easier.
I have to agree. It's, it's kind of started to feel more like the reopening committee is taking the place of the school committee, if you will. I thought it was more, um, an advisory committee and it seems like that's where decisions are being made. And as a school committee, I don't feel like I know what decisions are being made or why. And so it's really hard for me then, when the public contacts us to say, you know, we're all on the same page, we all know what's going on, and this is the background information for that. Because honestly, I don't know whatever, what leads to these decisions.
So I think, you know, the reopening committee is, is being used as an advisory committee. So John sort of brings in topics that, that need to be addressed. And if there aren't any topics that week, then we don't meet. Um, there certainly have been lately, so we've been meeting more often. Um, and, and then it is given back to John, then sort of as that advisory piece so that he follows through on the day-to-day operational decisions. Um, I, you know, I think he's talked about some of the communication pieces this week. Um, where there was some information that sort of got ahead of school committee for sure. Um, and I think, you know, there's that John and I try really hard to tag team and, and remind each other like, oh, have you told school committee this? Have you told school committee this other thing? Um, and, you know, I would just really like to encourage everyone again, you know, there was quite a few weeks ago, John asked everybody to start to schedule weekly meetings with him. Um, and I think, you know, if weekly is too much, then bi-weekly, because I get that we're all busy. Um, but I think, you know, having those touchpoints where all those background pieces can be filled in, so that when we get to these meetings, everybody comes in much more on the same page and we are kind of, you know, going through our business here. Um, so I would encourage everybody really to, to reach out to John and schedule those meetings, um, so that it doesn't feel as though there's a whole bunch of things going on at the operational level that you don't know about, so that you can, you know, in that you're filled in at that operational piece.
Yeah, I would, I would say that from my perspective, the, the going to a full remote um, program for the hybrid kids seems more of a, at what point we do that seems like a policy decision, not a procedure decision. And that's where I, that, that would be my point, that we're going to switch to remote at this point and move forward in the remote fashion this way seems like policy and that's school committee.
And I think the way that I saw it is that it is a, it is a time limited remote, so that if we, if we get to the end of winter break or we get into the middle or end of that first week back and, and we are, you know, say we are remote for that. And our numbers, but you know, if our numbers are at seven percent or, or worse, you know, I, I think we can anticipate that they're not going to just drop back to where in, in person hybrid makes sense, you know, in a couple of days. So I think at that point, that's when it, it switches from like this time limited piece that is operational to a more policy piece of poss- possibility of, you know, school committee saying, you know, we're remote for, for the, for the, you know, foreseeable future until our, you know, our operations tell us that it's safe to come back.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that, uh, distinction. You know, from a few days to effective on this day going forward until further notice, we will be going remote. And whatever situations may come up to, uh, put us in that. But also I just wanted to say, you know, to, to, to Megan and Emily's point, I was reading about Swamp Scott's decision to go remote for the next couple of days prior to Christmas. And, um, the superintendent said it had nothing to do with COVID, but it was that they had so many teachers that were out. And so, you know, to Megan's point, and they couldn't backfill to teach properly, but as we heard earlier in public comment, then we have to, and I'm sure our principals would, would do the best to adjust and scramble to, okay, how do we handle remote if, if the teacher is, if the teacher's too sick to do, um, hybrid learning, can that teacher do remote learning? Don't know. Maybe there, you know, there's different scenarios and then, you know, those principals would need to adjust to that. But when I read Swamp Scott's, you know, going remote, they, that, you know, superintendent Angelakis, I think her name is or whatever, she said specifically it was that they had so many teachers out that they just, you know, couldn't have in-person teaching. And we're not in that situation, like Megan said, but if, if that, or as Emily said, if that were the situation, you know, that would be good to know, you know, we have 20 or 30 teachers out in K to three. And we need to, you know, we need to go remote at the Glover School and it probably, it might even be a school by school situation as opposed to uh, a district-wide decision. So yeah, I kind of understand there, there's a, there's, there's not just a number. There's a lot of different factors that um, Nan and Dr. Bucky and the administrators and the reopening committee are considering. And then the last piece I'll say is.
Hey David, can I just jump on that just before you put a last piece in just to clarify too, that's, that oftentimes when people are in, they're either direct contact, so they can't be coming into work, but they still are okay to teach. So there's that balancing point too, in these systems, that it isn't necessarily that we're finding subs for the same amount of people when we're remote, that we would be in person. So that a classroom teacher, we could pull remote and a classroom teacher can take that over for his or her classroom. So it's, sorry, go ahead now.
No, that, that, you're right, depending on the situation. And I think based on, um, scenarios that I've had um, both at work and what we've had at the building project for our new school, there's also the step where you, you know, you err on the side of caution. There, there are specific, okay, if, if you're, if someone's positive and you're a close contact, you're out for 14 days. And if you're a contact of a contact. But we've seen at the building project, for instance, um, you know, somebody tested positive. And even though they weren't necessarily a close contact, um, take a step back, get the per, see if the person can get tested, you know, and, and make sure that you don't kind of add to the, you know, the COVID, the COVID challenges. And I think if you look at how big the school district is, um, and Sarah, I hadn't known that, that, the, the numbers just went up. So you know, erring on the side of caution for a few days here and there, taking a pause and between, um, Nan and Dr. Bucky and all the principals being able to, to work that out, you're right. It, it might not be um, a decision that can be made, uh, two or three weeks in advance, and it might be something that needs to be made a week in advance. Um, and, and those are going to be challenging situations. And I, I respect that too. If we want to err on the side of caution. But, um, I think I agree where, I think where, where Emily and Megan were saying, if it was more, or as you pointed out, Sarah, if it was more of a, a long-term decision, like, okay, effective January 1st, we're, we're out for the month of January. And well, why are we out for four straight weeks? Um, that kind of thing. So, yeah, there's just, it's, um, as our interim superintendent said, when we first got into this back in March and April, uncharted waters, unprecedented times. Um, lot of moving pieces, a lot of moving pieces. So I, I respect what every, all the questions that everybody's asking here. Um, related to this.
So I know some areas in some towns or, or whether they do it by town or county, release numbers that say, you know, we have this many obviously cases, but then they say we have this many under monitor quarantine. Um, can we, I know that we have those numbers compiled on a weekly basis. Can, I, I see no reason that we couldn't release those, um, weekly that say in our system, we have this many students, this many, I mean, we send out those emails anyway. This many people in each building actually positive, but we have this many people under monitor quarantine. Cause that will give a people an idea, wow, we like 10% of our teachers can't teach in the building, or we now are at, at the Evelyn, or the village school that we have 20% that are in quarantine. So we're providing distance learning for 20% of our students that that's not sustainable. We'll have to go remote. So that, that in and of itself may be indicate to people that we're starting, um, oh my gosh, I love whoever this little guy is popping in. Um, yeah, um, that may give people an idea of kind of that dashboard that people were thinking about, if we could release those weekly.
Sure. I know Deanna McMahon collects a lot of data and she shares it with Joan Miller and me. And so I can work with, uh, Deanna and also Andrew to see what sort of information we could get to the committee on a weekly basis.
And that's like, I was thinking like to the community, that, that information as a dashboard.
Well, that, that would be out of my wheelhouse. I could suggest that to Andrew, but I, I couldn't make that happen. But I, I don't know what.
It's our data. It's our teachers. It's our data. It's not his. It's ours.
Which is what I'm saying, I would release it, but not to the community.
No, but I'm the school community. Like, there's no.
Like it as a part of the weekly update?
Yeah, that would be a great place for it. Cause I think that would give people that idea of, okay, like, we're getting close. They can't sustain this many people remote.
You mean that weekly update that is so woefully long, people cannot re- possibly read it every week? You want me to add to it, Sarah?
Or just put it on the reopening. I mean, get it out there. We have some figure this out.
Um, so I, you know, I, I.
Go.
No, go ahead, David.
I, I mean, we'd have to run that by Andrew. I mean, when, when, you know, it, it, it's just like Special Ed, when you start, you know, we don't name names. And then when you start drilling in, then people can identify who it is. You don't go to the Marblehead town page and find out who the 78 people are that are tested positive with COVID. Um, so we would probably need some additional guidance there. It's just like, we don't say how many firemen and how many policemen and how many highway workers and.
But there are many, many.
But as an example, you know, but I, I'm just saying, I don't know enough about it, Sarah. I mean, it's a reasonable ask, but I don't know enough about it. You know, I was reading where, um, you know, Lynn closed their, uh, city offices because once again, just like I was reading about Swamp Scott today, same, same paper. Um, they closed their offices because they had, um, too many COVID cases, but they didn't say who had COVID at the town offices. And they didn't say how many cases there were. They just said they were going to close their town offices. And people would have to do their business, um, remotely. So we'd probably just have to check and see.
I'm definitely not saying like, say, we have a science teacher. I'm saying like, there are a ton, a ton of places doing this. It's completely legal. There's no violations. Using phrasings like currently we have 27 staff under monitor quarantine who are working remotely. Like that, that, there's no, if, unless you have a magic eight ball, I mean, no one's going to figure out that, you know, who that is.
I'm happy to work on this.
All right. Um, so with that, I, I would like to ask for a motion to support Dr. Bucky, uh, to make a decision based on community metrics as to whether or not to be in a remote system or a hybrid system for the week of January 4th.
Wait, can you repeat that?
Yeah. So, um, I would like to take a motion to support Dr. Bucky to make a decision based on community metrics on whether to be in a remote system or a hybrid system for the week of January 4th.
So moved.
David moved.
I'll second.
Megan, second. All right.
You know what I'm going to ask.
The community metrics. Yeah. You know, if we had them, I would specify them in the motion. Um, but I think you know, the pieces that have just been discussed and that John is working to drill into, and he does have his health and safety committee that is made up of doctors and epidemiologists and Andrew Petty, um, that are using the community metrics that we have been using all along. Um, and that John has, yes, John.
Such an odd system for meetings. Um, Megan, since Sarah has access to the data, uh, that it's going to be 4.3 for this week, knowing we're going to be 21, 22, 23, would you feel better if we said greater than or equal to 4.3?
I mean, I don't know what I'm going to feel good about. I, I, you know, I, I just want to know, like, what is it? What is it? So that we can all plan so that, you know, we know, like as a parent, I can also kind of keep track of what's going on in the community and be like, okay, I can get a feel for, for what's happening. Cause otherwise it just feels for me, again, I'm speaking right now as a parent too. It's nebulous. So I have no idea what's, what's getting, what's getting us there. And I appreciate the fact of what everybody said, like, you know.
But this isn't.
There's a lot of conversations going on that I'm not privy to. So I get that, I get that point.
Can, John, can we say that knowing that it's somewhere between 3.85 as we were in person under those and then 4.3 that we're just hearing now, can you talk with the Health and Safety Committee again? Um, and, and decide on a number and maybe a few other qualifiers, if that's necessary um, to go along with that number. And then can we know those before the winter break?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
And I would think hospital, I personally would want hospital capacity to be, to be a driver. Like if we're at 2%, but we still only have two ICU beds, how do you, how do you open? I mean, that's just me.
Sarah, you know, I can get you that information, so I can add that.
I have the link now.
All right. We have a motion that's been seconded. I will roll call vote. Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox. All right. We have a motion that's been seconded. I will roll call vote. Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox.
Yes.
Emily Baron.
Do we have to add that we're going to get those metrics before?
Uh, if you want that added into the motion.
I want to, cause it still don't feel comfortable, like without knowing that these are going to be the I just don't, I just want to know before I commit to that. So can I just?
Can I add the motion? We can amend the motion.
Just for clarity's sake, we're not, I mean, this is just saying we support. I mean, he can close schools.
And I think he's made, you know, in a, in a good faith commitment to getting us the, those, those metrics by Wednesday.
Okay, then that's fine. Then I.
I, I would agree with that.
Okay.
All right. So Emily, Emily Baron, uh, Megan Taylor.
Yes.
And David Harris.
Yes.
Thank you all. Now for our next topic, sports.
Well, this will be easy and quick. Um, so one of the questions that, uh, came up, well, kudos to Greg Siglarsky and the winter sports, uh, teams that started, uh, on Monday. And sports are not sports anymore. They don't look like they have parameters. Student athletes getting their temperatures taken. And so Greg is juggling a lot of balls and doing a great job. Uh, I think we have over two hundred nod for me, Greg, student athletes that are participating in winter sports. And so that, you know, that's a huge commitment to the mitigation efforts to make sure that we're able to do that safely. The question that is before us is, uh, and it came up at reopening and there was, uh, spirited debate um, about should we continue with practices over the holiday recess? Particularly if we're going to be remote Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Um, and then, uh, if we're going to return in remote for that first week, um, is it a mixed message? To say, okay, it's not safe for in-person learning, but co-curriculars or, uh, interscholastic sports can continue. So I asked Greg, uh, to reach out to the league, see what other, uh, communities are doing. Um, and so I'll just dish to Greg to give you maybe a two or three minute update on where the league is in terms of these conversations.
Thanks, John. And the number is two twenty-four for, uh, winter student athletes this winter. So, um, just to give you a, a pretty quick update here on how things are going, um, we did a pretty good job in the fall. I, I have to say, as far as, um, our athletic department and our athletic trainers and our, um, our interns that I kind of mentioned last, last time I was on with you guys, uh, we had no cases from athletics. Um, so that's always something good to keep in mind. Uh, we were very cautious, probably some of the cautious, if not the most cautious in the league. Uh, my athletic trainer is pretty tied in with other, uh, trainers around the league and, um, what our protocols are, are way, way at the top of, of being cautious. Um, as of right now, we've had a good three days of practice and tryouts, uh, with our boys and girls basketball, boys and girls hockey, swimming and diving, skiing and gymnastics, uh, all have gone at least once. Um, some have gone three times. Uh, we're very, very, very spread out in the field house. We have chairs six feet apart all the way around the exterior of the field house. Uh, and things have been going really smoothly then. Um, kids have been really good about bringing multiple masks in case one gets wet or, or tears. Um, yeah, we're following all the protocols set by the EEA. Um, it should be set by the MIA, which were derived from the EEA. Um, the hockey rinks we play in and the YMCA have very strict guidelines that we've been following. Uh, we're still taking temperatures, uh, of every kid and going through the attestation form with every kid before every single practice. Um, so that hasn't changed. That's all recorded in one spot. Um, and then looking forward to after a vacation, many, many games wouldn't be until probably after the eighteenth of January. As we are only one of five schools who are, uh, who started this week with, with, uh, our practice and tryouts. Uh, to touch on what Dr. Bucky, uh, spoke of, um, Beverly started this week. Uh, they're playing next week, uh, as well as the week after. Uh, Gloucester also started this week. Uh, they are not remote at all next week or the first week of January. Again, this is as of, as of today, and they're playing all the way through. Uh, Masco is remote next week. Uh, they are not remote the week of the fourth. Uh, they are playing varsity only practices on the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth and thirtieth. So they're not doing anything next week. Uh, PBD started this week, except for their basketball team. They're starting until the twenty-eighth, as they had some sort of a, a breakout within their program. Uh, they are playing, but not sure of that vacation week. Uh, and Winthrop, who was the, uh, the other team that is playing, they are, uh, remote next week. Um, and they are maybe coming back on the fourth, but they're playing through regardless. Again, all as of today. So those are the five schools who could go. The other seven aren't starting until after, uh, January sixth or eighth, or some are still TBD.
I just want to do a point of clarification and thank you, Greg, for doing all of that work. That's very helpful to the committee to be able to have a frame of reference for all of that. But when you say play, you mean practice because there's no interscholastic play scheduled before January something.
Yes, we are only practicing right now. The first game, if everybody was able to start this week, the first game wouldn't even have been until January eighth, anyway, that Friday. Um, but as of right now, like I said, only five of us are playing and the other seven uh, probably aren't even going to start until the sixth or the eighth or that following week. So, uh, again, practice, sorry. We aren't going to practice until then. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have or, or listen to discussion, then I can chime in if, if need be.
Sarah.
Hey, I just want to, I have a question for Greg, but I didn't realize we were transitioning away from the last agenda item. So I had two things about the DSC meeting that came out. If I can, we, after this, we can circle back. So I can answer this. Um, how many of those five are in the red? Cause my understanding, and I could, I could have missed this was in the fall, when someone was in the red, we weren't playing them.
So what we did in the fall was we kind of came up with a guideline. If, uh, if a community was in the red for three consecutive weeks, uh, we wouldn't play them. We did that once with Sawgus. Uh, otherwise everybody else either was in and out of the red or, um, wasn't three weeks all the way through. Once the season came to an end. Uh, as of, as of today, it's only us and Beverly in our league. We are, uh, both yellow. Everyone else is red.
Yeah. Cause I know Winthrop's been significantly bad recently. So that's, that's what jumped out to me is is this a mute discussion? Like, are, are there even anybody, is it, there even anybody to play?
So again, it, with, what I went through the list here, uh, Danvers is starting on January sixth. Uh, Swamp Scott is starting on January sixth. Uh, let's see, Swa- Sawgus is in January eighth. Salem and the two Lins are TBD, uh, and that, that's the rest. So they're all scheduled to start practices and tryouts that week, that first week of January. Uh, and then we would play games two weeks after that, uh, as long as they can go.
And even when we're home for practices for hockey, obviously we're not playing in Marblehead. What, what are the rinks we use? Salem and Lynn? Or just Salem?
No, we, we, uh, aren't using Salem State. They, uh, they aren't taking anybody in, any outside programming in. They're just their own, uh, their own community. We are practicing out of, uh, the Lynn Arena and also in Revere as well.
So we're going to substantially red communities with these kids daily to practice?
So the, the Lynn practices are at six AM. We're the first ones in there and, um, Swamp Scott Boys Hockey would practice after us. Um, and then Revere, we're there Sunday afternoons. We have back-to-back ice times where we, there'd be a boy and a girl practice. Or, uh, that could be a game slot as well, uh, moving forward to January.
I personally, it's hard because we've gotten, you know, obviously some very articulate emails that cite sources that talk about how these extracurriculars really are are the lifeline that some of these kids are holding on to, especially in the high school for that mental health piece. Um, so it is a hard decision, but at the same time, I think as, as a school committee, we have to protect in-person learning, um, whenever possible. And I, and I don't know the answer to this, but is, is it right to say we're not safe enough for in-person learning, but we're safe enough for in-person sports that are indoors? I mean, the fall was a different beast. They weren't indoors. And the ones that were, correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, the only one that would have been is volleyball and that was deemed to be put off to fall, fall two, because we weren't ready to do indoor. Correct? Well, if we weren't ready to do indoor at two percent, what makes us ready to do indoor at four point three two? When we put in-person learning on hold.
Well, outdoors, indoors, follow the science. The science, as Megan Taylor said and Emily have said, you know, uh, the science shows that students are not transmitters. Um, my wife has been back at school full-time, five days a week, one hundred percent attendance. Um, and, um, she's going to be back at school tomorrow. And Greg's, uh, record, granted, it was outdoors, Sarah. We had, um, no incidences and as he said, we, we take extra caution. And I've heard all kinds of things about how we travel to games, how we limit the amount of spectators, how, um, you know, everything that we're doing, we, we are one of the districts that seems to be going above and beyond. So I totally trust the judgment of Greg and Dan that we will continue that practice. Um, as he said, you know, we're going to go to the Lynn Arena. We're probably, we're going to, I'm sure they have limits to, there's only one team in there. We're not going to be commingling with other teams. We're not going to be using locker rooms, um, and things like that. And I'd like to make a motion. I don't know what, what the motion was to vote on, but I'm assuming it was to allow practice to continue over winter break. And I'd like to make a motion that we allow all varsity sports teams to continue their practices over winter break and through the week of, uh, January fifth. Or up until January fifth, if that's what the original motion was going to be. And let's just move on from this.
Second there. Do we have a motion and it's seconded? Does anybody have any further questions for Greg or anything else?
Question, Greg, and I think you said this, so I apologize. But in the fall, if, uh, a community was red for three weeks, then they, that team would have to suspend play. Is it the same thing now? That's not in place?
So that, that, that would be us playing against them if they were consecutive for three weeks. The, uh, the initial, initial guidelines that came out, uh, talked about if you started in person in the red, excuse me, if you started, uh, remote in the red, you would have to get approval from your school committee to start in the fall. Glands have been changed a couple of times since then. Uh, and as of, as of right now, um, with our, our meetings with, uh, myself and Dr. Bucky and, uh, Andrew Petty and our principal and, uh, Todd Bloodgood, all of us have had many discussions about uh, athletics moving forward. And we were going to reconvene, uh, the first week of January to kind of see where we were at and talk about spectators and see how that would go. Um, but as, as of right now, the, what you asked was if a community was red three consecutive weeks, we would, would not play them in a, in a contest.
I had two questions for Greg before I ready to vote on this. Um, in the fall, on the reopening committee for athletics, you had done a survey. And if I recall, um, the least positive results on, on coaches feeling safe to play was, or to coach, was for those winter indoor sports. Have, has there been a change in that? Do you have staff that, that are feeling good about coaching this? Or have you gotten concerns? I'm not asking you to say like, you know, the basketball coaches, you know, but just generally, is your, is your staff supportive of this?
Uh, yes, yes, they are, are very supportive. They've all been, um, actually pretty voiceless to me about, about continuing to play and hoping they can continue. Uh, they see, I mean, obviously it's a small sample size with three days, uh, just this week. Um, but they have all seen that it can work. And, uh, again, the protocols we have in place, uh, I, I think would, would be safe to continue. But again, I want to, not really my decision at the end of the day right now. It's I'll do best. So, uh, I'll, I'll do whatever you, whatever you guys feel is best. And I think we can be, I'm confident we can make either work if we're going to continue. Uh, and, or if we're going to hold off, then that's okay too.
Thank you for that. And then the next question is for John. You talked about your health and safety reopening committee and how you have epidemiologists and public safety experts and think, or public health experts. Have you, um, gotten feedback from them on where they sit on these, um, winter sports, which I think all, are any of them outdoors or are they all indoors?
Skiing is outdoors.
So, okay. Well, yeah, obviously. Um, that's a dump of wax here. So, um, I mean, the science does say there is a, there is a stark difference between indoor versus outdoor and transmission rates. I mean, that's the science. So.
So I will speak, uh, to that question, Sarah. I have not asked them specifically about athletics. But their, um, weigh in on the mental health concerns that are increasing. Um, I think having co-curriculars, interscholastic athletic practices continue over the break is a very strong safety net that for me outweighs or mitigates the COVID transmission concerns. Um, I think that for, i- in a normal December, as a high school principal, we worried about our most vulnerable kids having two, two weeks without connection to the school or without that check-in. And so I know that athletics for two hundred and twenty-four students is a daily connection and those students have friends who they communicate with. And I just, I, I think it, the safety net aspect in terms of mental health for me compels me to ask the committee to consider allowing practices to continue.
And I don't disagree with that mental health, um, aspect, but I think what's, we need to appreciate that there are just as many students that get mental health stability from in-person learning. And we, we, we can't, I don't know. I, it, it does feel like we are prioritizing athletics over education right now.
I think the difference in this is coming in for me is that we're, we're only allowing for practice right now. And that we have not gotten to the interscholastic play at this point and that, you know, the rink piece, they have figured out ways to keep this safe, you know, throughout all of this, um, indoors as well. So, um, I think that's the piece for me that's kind of helping me feel more calm about this. Um, I don't know, I, I lost my train of thought. Megan, I know you had your hand, hand up.
I mean, I was just going to second what John said, um, about the mental health piece of it, you know, especially over the winter break. And I did listen into that DSC call, and that was the point that was hammered home and just sits in my brain constantly about the mental health impacts to our, to our students. Um, and like you said, Sarah and David, the motion on the table is for practice over the winter break until January fifth.
Cause I do think I'd like to just, just to really do our due diligence because I, I, I don't disagree at all with Sarah either, that, that, you know, I do feel like our primary duty is to protect in-person learning. Um, oh, and the other point that I wanted to make a moment ago was that we're, we're just talking about how hard of the decision to pull remote. It's, it's not about the spread within the schools. It's about teachers being able to, um, you know, teach their classrooms while, while being in quarantine and that there's this pressure on the system. Um, and so that, that for me also separates this piece from, it's not that we have massive spread in our schools. It's that, that there's, there's system balances that are going on here. Um, and so I think, I think I would like to revisit this. We do have a meeting the, for that first week of, uh, January. Um, and so I would love an update on this. Um, but, but I think, you know, right now we are just voting on practices and, and, and for continued tryouts.
Are we, I mean, are we at, are we doing, you know, chorus and, and are we, are we only doing extracurriculars for sports? Or are we giving those, those mental health outlets for kids in other avenues or in other things like that? Or is it only sports?
The only one that I've been asked about is sports, but my feeling would be the same, Sarah, that if the a cappella group wanted, or the orchestra, or Gay Straight Alliance, or the student council, or the honor society, wanted to be able to do a Toys for Tots drive or something like that, uh, over the break, that we would allow them to do that.
I've actually done a lot of thinking on that too, Sarah, um, throughout this because as a, yeah, you know, band inquire were my life as a high school student. Um, and, 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 you know, in, in my opinion, they often get the short end of the stick. Um, but I do think, you know, what I kept coming back to in my head, there was a lot of my, I had a lot of thoughts on it. But what I kept coming back to is that the, the band inquire also, um, their, their meeting during school as well. And as Dan pointed out, Dan Howell pointed out at the beginning of their, their meeting during school as well, and as Dan pointed out, Dan Howell pointed out at the beginning of the meeting, that, that they are finding ways in which to put on their performances and kind of come together and, 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 and make their practices work, however difficult it may be. And that, that, you know, you can't really have a Zoom basketball session. And you can't, you know, you have to be, you have to be in person for those things. And so, you know, again, I, I haven't, I haven't completely wrapped my own thoughts around all of that. But I, you know, that's kind of where my head is at right now. Anybody else? All right, we've got a motion. Oh, Emily?
We're just voting up until January 4th, practices.
No, through the week of the 4th.
Oh, through that whole week.
Correct. John?
You have a, a school committee meeting bef- the first week of January, I believe.
Right, right.
So you could vote through the next school committee meeting because, Sarah, you have asked for an update. So you could extend it from that point that they could wrap this up through that Thursday.
And we're fully remote and, and games, there's no interscholastic play planned before 1/7.
That is correct.
Okay, okay. All right, um, Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox.
I gotta tell you, I'm torn. I, I, I am so torn because I know that the, the kids need this for the mental health piece. But it feels like we're prioritizing sports over education. It does, it feels that way. But I, I know. No.
Emily Baron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
And David Harris. David, you're on mute.
Yes.
Okay. So that motion passes four to one. And Greg, we will look forward to hearing from you again on the 7th.
No problem. I'll keep track of everything as we go along here. So I'll give you a nice update on our next, next meeting. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much, Greg. Sarah, I know you said you wanted to circle back and had a couple of questions about Desi.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I, I had those ready to go and then I forgot. You, you talked about how they gave out guidelines about the amount of synchronous learning and hours of live instruction, the minimum over the 10-day period. What does that mean for the VHS and ingenuity kids? Because my understanding is it's fully asynchronous.
Yeah, since edgenuity is offered by the state and virtual high school has a teacher connected to it, those are counted in time on learning as part of the formula. And Nan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but those are scheduled for students just the same as an MHS chemistry class would be.
Yes, that's correct. And I know Dan Bauer is working on the touch, touch check-ins with staff, with students on a daily basis. So he is gonna work with schedules to make sure that stu-, all students have that access to an adult.
Which is in addition to the time on learning requirement.
Correct.
If we were to wind up in a, in a model that winds up being longer term, full remote, will we at that point give those VHS and ingenuity students a chance to transition into a full remote classroom with their peers in district?
I don't want to speak for Dan Bauer in the high school schedule because that's a decision that he and the high school faculty would make. But i- if history is any indicator, Dan is always open to considering possibilities and things that will better the experience for students at the high school. And edgenuity, well, I'm gonna speak for virtual high school because that's my experience, is a semester-based, most of the classes. Now, if it's an AP macroeconomics, that's gonna run the full year. But a lot of those courses are semester-based, and so they're gonna time out, so to speak, mid-January. And so that would give those students an opportunity to consider something for the second semester.
All right. Thank you, John. I think that, oh, Emily, did you have another question?
Yeah, sorry. This goes back to the cameras. And in our meeting, I think it was on the 19th, because I read it in the minutes, we, we had talked about the technology audit at the high school. And so I was just wondering where that is. Are we waiting for the new technology director to start that? Or just an update on that?
Yep, that's a great question. Thank you, Emily. We met with the tech audit firm. And I brought Kathy and Stephen into that meeting so they could update Stephen on the work that they have done to date. And then for Stephen to be able to weigh in on some things that he would like to see them do. And the great thing about this firm is they have worked with the community of Marblehead, the town of Marblehead, in terms of the police and Abbott Hall and doing some Mary Alley work in the past. So they have a familiarity with our systems. And so they've done some remote work. And I think Stephen is bringing them onsite to do some continuation work. Just one last thing before you jump in. David actually brought this to my attention. I think I should say clearly, we are in school tomorrow. And thank you to Todd Bloodgood and the DPW and the Highway Department, who did work starting at midnight this morning and have us worked all day. And what a, what a partnership, the community and the schools and clearing the sidewalks and us helping with roads and then the Highway Department coming in and helping with parking lots. So we are in person tomorrow.
I was just getting texts about rumors of the, the otherwise. So thank you for clearing that up. All right, Michelle Cresta, that leads us to you with a monthly financial report.
Hi, how are you? Okay, so the monthly financial report for the end of November, we had spent a total of $11,929,000 or 29% of the operating budget at this point. Couple of things to note, we are closely monitoring the special education out-of-district tuition costs as we always do. At the end of October, I had reported that we were estimating a shortfall of $148,000 at that time. Good news is, we have taken some actions and made some changes. And we've had some other, just other minor changes with students' tuitions. And our current shortfall is estimated to be $93,000. So we're definitely moving in the right direction. One thing that we will talk about in the next, but actually, agenda item is we have started a new specialized program that actually, it'll be starting at the very beginning of January, where we have brought two students from an out-of-district tuition placement. And we're bringing them back into the district, which is absolutely fabulous. The fact that we can do this and the bonus is it actually results in a cost savings. But the fact that we had this issue, the students were not receiving the services that they should have. And Eric and his team were amazing. And we were able to start this program, which resulted in some dollar savings for us, which is a great thing. But more importantly, it really addresses these students' needs more than they were able to receive outside of Marblehead. So that's a wonderful thing. But bottom line is, our, our current shortfall is estimated to be the $93,000, which is well within the special ed reserve of the $250,000 that we have available to us. Another area that I just wanted to mention is substitute teacher costs. Right now, we have only spent $11,000 or just over 11, just under 12 for substitute teachers, which only represents about 5% of our budget. Our budget is $232,000. Quickly, at this point in the year, we are probably 30 to 40% spent in that area. While the spring is usually a typical time where a lot of teachers use their personal days, we're just not able to attract teachers and fill our, our teaching vacancies that we really need to. So while we do have cost savings in that area, it's, it's not a great thing for our education. Also, I'm attaching, you know, in addition to the monthly report, I attached just a list of the budget transfers. You do not need to take any action on those, but those are for your information. Just wanna keep it completely transparent about the, the numbers that are moving within the budget. And the last page of, or actually not the last page, I'm sorry, I think the budget transfers is the last page. But there is, towards the end is the COVID, COVID expenditure report. It's one page. The total estimate has not changed since last month, but the figures leading up to that certainly have. So as of the end of November, we have spent $1,115,000. We have had encumbered at that point, $716,360. And we had an estimated expense of $81,601. That $81,000, we may not fully expend. And part of that is one grant that we are able to carry throughout the rest of the school year, which is great. But that totals our estimated COVID expenses of $1,913,486, which is right where we were expecting it last month. I do want to note that while most of the CARES Act funding does end as of December 30th, not even the 31st. So I don't know who, who decided on that date. But it does end, the end of this month, we will have certain ongoing costs related to our COVID response. And that includes our contracted cleaning services. And the total cost of that beyond the December date will be $198,000. And then we have storage trailers, which is storing the PPE, the cleaning disinfectant, the hand sanitizer and extra furniture that we had to remove from the schools. And the total cost of that will be about $5,000 for the remainder of the year. So I do think we will be able to cover those. I'm confident that we will be able to cover those with either the remaining CARES Act grant that we are able, the ESSER grant, to use past December and some operating fund surplus that we will have, primarily due to some vacant positions in our custodian and bus driver roles and the substitute teaching vacancies that we're not able to fill. And that's, that's about it for the financial report for November. If you have any questions?
Sarah?
So for these full remote weeks, we're saving on that outsourcing of custodial services, correct? We don't have to still pay them?
Correct. If we're going full remote, then we do not have them in. We may have them in depending on how many special education students will be in the schools. So we may not have, we, we may not have all of them not come in. We may have a select number of them come in. But primarily, our custodians are able to do that during the remote weeks. So if we go on any extended remote learning, then we definitely will not have any of, any of those contractors in.
Okay. And I know we have our subs in-house the last two years. And our sub pool has kind of shrunk from that. But we recoup savings compared to what we are paying Kelly. Considering that one of the drivers to us going full remote is the need for subs and the lack of subs, have we considered re-contracting with a service like Kelly, who has a bigger pool to deal with? Or have we considered upping what we pay people for subs so that we can indeed get those subs in and secure that in-person learning?
We have looked at that. If we bring in a third-party vendor to provide our substitutes, we're looking at a markup cost of about 40%. So that is significant. So while we're looking at, you know, our budget normally is about $230,000, we would be looking at a budget of approximately $400,000. So we're talking real dollars in the increase there.
Which I get, but if through half the year, we're way, way, way down mathematically, even at the 40% markup, we should be within our sub-line budget, which means we could stay in budget.
Yep, absolutely. The issue is, I have actually, Kelly Services in, in two of my previous districts, they were great. The problem was, they were also having the fill rate issues. They were not able to attract the subs because the subs are only paid what our daily rate pays. So we are the ones that determine that. So ultimately, yes, we do need to have a conversation at some point about what we pay our subs and we need to make sure that we are on the higher end. The problem is, every district around us is also having the same issue. So we do have surrounding districts who are paying slightly more, they are experiencing the same exact thing. So it's not a situation that's very unique to Marblehead. It's a situation that is, we can't attract the subs. A lot of these people are receiving unemployment. As long as the unemployment is extended, these people do not want to work. And in addition, our rate is not great. And, and they just do not want to come into the buildings during a pandemic. So we do have a pool of subs that pretty much report on a regular basis. But unfortunately, it's just not enough people. So we are, we are very creative and, or the principals are crea-, very creative in how they're using their powers and tutors at this time to fill all of those vacancies and the remote learning needs.
Yeah, I, I would like to see if we can maybe look at increasing that rate just because if that's a driver, we talk about metrics, that's a metric that helps us secure kids. And then I don't know that a lot of people in our community know that, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is to be a short-term sub, you don't need to have a teacher's license in the state of Massachusetts, correct?
Correct.
So if there are moms and dads and caregivers out there that are desperate to get these kids back in the building, give, I don't know if it's Nan or Michelle or whoever, a call. Because if we have more subs to cover and we can keep teaching these kids in person, we can keep kids in person. So don't have, don't think that you don't have the qualifications that you need because you're bad.
Right, absolutely. And that's something that we probably should do a little bit more of. Or we could possibly do a little bit more of a PR, you know, maybe put in the principals newsletters and whatnot. But yes, we are desperately in need of short-term subs. So we can start spreading that word. And bus drivers as well, but not as many people are qualified to drive buses.
And then my other question for Michelle is, I know. That's Matthew. Sorry, guys. So I know that we, we are over on our COVID spending somewhat. And I, and I think that, you know, there's, there's a lot out there right now. Are there any other recurring contractors? Like, I know we have the, the custodians. And you mentioned one more, but I know we were also paying for communications out of that COVID money. Is that something reoccurring that we, we need to allocate money for or is, or no?
We may.
I'm gonna jump in there. Michelle, the communications contract was a five-month contract and that ended on November 30th. And so that is continued to be volunteer major-driven, but that was a budgetary expense that ended on 11/30.
That was all my Michelle questions.
All right, I think that leads us along to the budget transfer request.
Yes, thank you. So as I had mentioned in the report, we have started this, brought this program into the district. And we're placing it at the village school to serve two students that are currently outplaced. The families were ecstatic to be able to bring them back into the district, which is a wonderful thing. It results in a cost savings to us. However, the cost of educating these students, it resides, the funding resides in the out-of-district tuition budget for private-day schools. So by bringing them back in, we have hired two staff members, one special education teacher and one BCBA, board-certified behavioral analyst. And so we need to fund those two positions. So I am proposing and requesting that school committee approve a transfer, establishing these two new positions and transferring the amount of $86,320 from the out-of-district tuition budget to village school special education faculty salaries.
So moved.
Second. Any other questions on that?
I don't have a question. I just want to say, well done to everyone who worked on this. It's, you know, I think it's really great anytime that we can bring students back into their home district. So well done.
It is a wonderful thing. It is a wonderful thing, really is.
All right, Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Emily Baron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries five to zero. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right, and then the only other piece there is our schedule of bills for the last couple of weeks. So can I get a motion to approve the identified schedule of bills totaling four hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seven cents? So moved. Megan move?
Seconded.
Sarah, second. Uh any questions? All of those uh schedules were in the packet as well. All right, Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Emily Baron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thanks, Michelle.
All right, so that leads us back to the MCAS testing resolution. This was in our packets a couple of weeks ago. We had tabled it. Um but I wanted to make sure that it kind of came back um for a second look. Um are we ready to talk about it tonight, or do we need a third look after the break? You're fine to talk about it? Okay. All right. Um do we want to open that up for discussion then? Where are people's thoughts? I know the conversation before had been that we were gonna try to touch base with Nan. Uh cause Emily had talked with her and had had some good conversation with her.
Are we out of order to just ask Nan to give a two-minute little spiel?
If Nan is, if Nan is comfortable.
You're prepared, not to put you on the spot, man.
Yeah, I'm prepared, Nan. Are you okay with that, or would you um?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
So the primary conversation that I've been having, um that I recently had with some members is around the language that incl- um refers to pulling away as a district from MCAS altogether, from for this year and future years. And so my conversation is related to that, that, that point of data collection for us as a district right now is really the only standardized piece of information that we have. We do not have a universal tool in the district for assessment. So um we have a lot of benchmark uh information that teachers collect. We have some formative and summative pieces that go along with our curriculum resources. But we really don't have a standardized standards-based standardized assessment tool. And so we can get a lot from that information. We, we, we understand, we can dig down to the level of student growth. We can see not only a student's level of achievement in terms of proficiency, but also um how much they've gained in one year in a content area. Uh so there's a lot to be learned about teaching and learning through the, that information. And as long as you use it to inform instruction uh and to grow teaching practices, I think right now where there isn't another tool in our district, it's important that our teachers have it. It um to give you an example of how teachers might use that data, uh they can pull reports from it and find out where exactly as a grade level the students are falling short of being able to meet standards. And they can pull a standard and really be able to talk about where are we going to make sure that we hit the standard a little bit harder than we did last year because we're seeing here that only eighty percent of our students were at proficiency with it. So how do we change where we put it in our pacing? How many times do we come back and revisit it before MCAS testing? So it's really not about students getting uh proficiency on the MCAS. It's about students retaining the information and being able to apply it. And so that's an indicator of proficiency on the MCAS, that the students learned it and are able to apply it. And that's gonna benefit the teachers um in future years. So if we were to have MCAS data from last year, it um from, say, the fourth-grade ELA um pieces of information would be used by the fifth-grade team. The fifth-grade team would be looking at teacher, that students that they had in their, have in their classrooms right now. And where do they enter in September based on proficiency and those skills? And so if they're able to look at their class of students and say, most of my kids are coming with an area of a weakness in a math standard or an ELA standard or social studies standards, they can fill that gap based on that information. So there's lots of really good ways to use the data. I think MCAS has um some negative connotations in terms of how people um look at it in terms of accountability and can put a lot of pressure on kids to, to um perform in certain ways. And the way that I prefer to use data is really as a teaching tool. And to let kids just show what they know. And that's all we ask of kids when they, when they take the MCAS and to take that onus off them and that level of pressure off them. I will also add that uh I just discovered that the state, there is a working group looking at um trying to get the MCAS to be more consolidated if uh for when it is implemented this spring. So there'll be shorter sessions and fewer questions.
Thank you, Nan.
Sarah? So I think it's the second or third or second to last paragraph here where it says, "And further be it resolved that the Marblehead School Committee rejects the calls for all students in the Marblehead Public School System to undertake MCAS tests during the 2021 school year or ever." I would amend that to say, instead of or ever, I think the point we're getting at is that, not that they never take them again, but that whatever, if you hit a third grader that was gonna take the third-grade MCAS this year, that they're not going to do that. And we're not gonna ask them to make up that third-grade MCAS next year. So just to amend that language so that we take, we, we resolve that we're asking there'd be none this year, and whatever grade level you were in in the 2021 school year, that that not be required to be made up. And I think that that actually makes a lot more sense than that verbiage of or ever.
So I'm wondering if, cause that's kind of, I, you know, remembering back, I'm wondering if so, one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph down, and further be it also resolved. No, sorry, the final paragraph. Additionally, we reiterate our call. So the very last few words, "We urge the legislature to enact a moratorium on high-stakes testing for three years." What if we, what if we added it to say that uh we urge the legislature to enact a moratorium on using high-stakes testing for graduation requirements for the next three years? Cause to me, it, this seems much more like a, a high school piece than the, with the or ever, because we do use them for graduation requirements. And so more so than a third grade, having to take it in fifth grade or fourth grade, it seems like it would come into play where the biology one would need to be taken by seniors because covid was hit, hit when you were, you know, in freshman or sophomore, that gets taken.
Um the only, the only wonder I have about that, maybe Dan Bauer can speak to that, is I believe if you are going to qualify for the Abigail Adams Scholarship, that the MCAS is part of that requirement.
Correct.
So I just want to clarify here and correct me if I'm misunderstanding this, but this resolution, whether we pass it or not, has, does not determine if Marblehead does MCAS. It is literally just like our opinion, right? If the state says you're doing MCAS, we're doing MCAS. So this is literally just saying like, hey, here's a, it's basically our opinion that then we're putting in a letter and sending to the State House.
Yes. Similarly, as we begged for guidance for reopening things and did not get it, we can beg that the MCAS be shut down and we may not get that.
So not to be like totally controversial here, but is it worth it? Shall I say that out loud? I don't know.
John, do you want to weigh in?
I, I would like to weigh in, and I think that Megan has teed this up beautifully for me. That of the things that you need to talk about, this resolution, if you're starting to wordsmith it, is something that you just take a polite pass on because it's not, it, it's more symbolic than anything. And so if you vote uh to accept it as written, or you spend some time and wordsmith it and change it, it really is just a symbolic gesture.
I mean, it is and it isn't. If, if we got an email from every single person in this town asking for the same thing, it's symbolic. They can't compel us, but their symbolism would be compelling. So I think if all the school districts come together and ask for this, there's no mandate through this letter for Desi to react, but I would hope that they would be reasonable in saying we have the vast majority asking for something, this is compelling.
I, I would love to be able to agree with you, Sarah. That's just not how Desi works. Because superintendent's weighed in on the new resolution that they passed for time on learning regulations, and they ignored it out of hand.
Can I add one thing, though, is that um, you know, I'm kind of discussing this um with Nan especially. Some things did come up that I, I do think we can take, I don't know if action's the right word, but maybe suggest, is that um one of the things I asked Nan is around the scheduling piece. You know, if we do have MCAS, how do we make sure that we schedule it to have the least impact on the learning time for our students? And so if we have control over that, like that's where I'd like to see us put some time and effort in thinking about it. And the other piece that Nan mentioned um was around the data collection around assessments and having a consistent tool in place that then we can utilize. So that's another piece that I'd love to see us drill into and a little bit more. Now is the perfect time since we're talking about budgets. So if that's something that we need as a district to make sure that we can assess where our students are at in a consistent way for all our teachers to then leverage, then I would like to see us do that. Um so if we could put some, you know, if we have the opportunity to kind of drill into that a little bit more for this budget season, I would love to do that.
Emily?
Um and I have to agree with Megan, and that was the big thing that I got out of when I spoke with Nan too. And so it's like, if we don't do the MCAS, what are we gonna do instead? We have to do something. So I think that's a great point, that we need to come up with an alternative. I mean, the MCAS are gonna happen, but in the district, we need an alternative also, another way to collect this data. So at least we got that out of it.
Nan, what levels can, can families opt out of? I know, like, third grade you can opt out of, right? But you can't, I would assume, tenth grade. You have to do that.
I think tenth grade is the only one, and I'm not even sure about tenth grade. That might, I, Dan Bauer may have a better understanding of that.
So families could opt out?
You just don't get your competency determination, and so you do not qualify for a diploma in the Commonwealth. You get a certificate of attainment.
Only the tenth grade one.
You can meet all the local graduation requirements, so you can meet all the Marblehead High School graduation requirements, but without getting your competency determination in science, ELA, and math, MCAS, you cannot get a diploma from the Commonwealth.
Yeah, but that's only tenth grade, correct?
That is correct.
You could opt out of everything else, take the tenth grade and still get your diploma.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, well, it seems like we're ready to just move along from this. And if anybody feels differently, again, we can add it back at a different point. So, you know, just because we passed tonight doesn't mean that it can't come back. All right, so that leads us to school committee goals. Um I have failed to get the strategic plan goal up, up and, up and posted. Um so I will just take that on the chin right away. I don't know where the other goals are at. I have not seen any of them either.
We have a budget draft goal, which we could go through, but I, it probably makes more sense to do them all together.
Um yeah.
Then maybe it wouldn't be a draft.
Yeah. And was there a facilities goal was that we had talked about?
We're trying, I think it's best to, to wait on the facilities review for that, so that we know what our, our major drivers are.
Okay. All right, so I will, I'm gonna plan on putting this on for the seventh. Um and attempting to do it then, and even if it means a placeholder for the facilities. Um, you know, maybe one of our goal, one of the goals is to get that done and, and have an accurate gauge. Um so yeah, but we can, we can work on that on offline on that. All right, um that brings us to the review of the policies that Emily and I and John are proposing some changes to. So there are uh four current policies that we've got small changes that, um you know, in addition of a paragraph here, a tweak, or kind of like a yeah, tweak on a paragraph and a different one. And then the physical education, so IHAE um is a brand-new one that uh John, I believe you said you had that one in Nantucket?
Yes.
Um and so he brought that to our attention, and as we looked at other districts, um there, you know, plenty of them have that physical education policy as well. So we felt that it was a, a good idea to, to bring it forward. Um the IHAI occupational education, the only change that we're making to that, and I cleared this one with Dorothy Presser, um that we are just wanting to change the title of it because occupational education to all of us made it seem like an occupational therapy-type piece, um when in reality it is a vocational and technical education policy. So it seemed more appropriate to name it as such. And um Dorothy's thoughts on it were that if that more accurately reflects where our district policies should be, then we can make that change. So this would be sort of the, the official second reading. The first was in the policy subcommittee. This would be our second meeting, and then they would come back on the seventh. So um if anybody has any questions, otherwise we can continue to move along. I, in, in the packet too, I had highlighted the changes that were made in red.
Do we have to actually read them?
No, we don't.
Although they're shorter than the typical policy.
They're much shorter than the sexual harassment policy that we got halfway through. All right, um so that will move us along to our superintendent communication discussion. Um I think we had this a little bit earlier. Um this was a requested agenda item. So does anybody have any further pieces to add? I know, you know, we kind of talked about how um there was a misstep between John and I this week about kind of getting information about the, particularly about next week's uh remote schedule. Um Sarah, you had, had asked for this one. Do you have anything further that she wanted to?
Um I think it really just surrounds around anything that not to, not to simplify it, but anything that would be awkward or embarrassing for us to find out. Um, you know, not in a timely manner. I, I would just like, you know, to get, we had, we had a few instances this week. I think it was just, you know, the perfect storm. Um, and I, I do feel like a lot is getting cleared and communicated through that reopening committee, where I, I just don't feel like we have the level of information um that we've had in the past. It, it, it feels like there was a shift with that reopening committee from advisory to more so than that. Um and we, we did have this conversation earlier, so I don't think we need to rehash all those pieces. But I think the good rule of thumb is just kind of, anything that's not commonplace, that isn't normal, you know, habitual, what would, anything out of the ordinary, just loop us in. Um so that we don't hear it uh in the news or somewhere else or, you know, a phone call or, or something else, or a meeting that happened this week in the middle of a meeting.
Yeah, that's where I think it would be really helpful, that if everyone could prioritize. And I think, you know, again, a weekly meeting with John may just be a little bit much, but you know, every other week, or maybe, you know, two weeks in a row and then a week off. Um, I just think with the with the speed at which information is coming out and decisions are being made this year and everything that's going on, you know, I think it would just be really, really helpful for everybody. Um, I think, you know, anytime that I talk with John, uh whether it's, you know, about something relatively minor or some other major thing that really has me in a tizzy. I always come away feeling a lot more grounded, um, a lot more sure of the direction that we're headed in. And and kind of, you know, the day to day, those day to day operations that we aren't always privy to and that, you know, are not our purview, but it certainly is helpful to understand them because it's sort of how everything that's going on is being implemented. Um, so yeah, I just, I would continue to to just really say, you know, keep talking to John.
And those weekly meetings, you know, are one thing, but the things I'm thinking of are more things that kind of are popping up, like, we had a meeting on Friday and we decided to shut down our schools and this is it. Or, you know, things that might not, I I if I had waited a week for that, I still would have you know, been caught with egg on my face. So um, I just want to make sure that 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 doesn't, I don't want to I think the policy last year that our last um interim superintendent had was, I never want to have the feeling for hear the phrase from one of my secu- um uh school committee members have to say, I actually did not know that. Um, and and I talked to John about this. He was very receptive. Um, so I just want to make sure that's our policy moving forward, that none of us it, you know, are in the position of saying, I did not actually know that.
John?
Yeah, um, I I will say uh in my effort to continuously improve uh in the new superintendent's uh roundtable or induction program this week, I made this my problem of practice and used five other new superintendents and five mask or mass uh facilitators and coaches, including my coach for, you know, what is a governance issue? What is an operations issue? When do you uh reach out to your school committee? And certainly, um, there were instances this week uh where I could have done a better job in communicating and certainly will own that, but as much of a priority as I have made communication, I would just ask people that if you get a call from a constituent and it doesn't resonate with you, and you're like, why wouldn't John have called me on this? Please pick up the phone and call me and say, why am I hearing about this? And don't stew in something, or don't take four or five or six telephone calls, which I know this is Marblehead and those come in quickly. But to just reach out and clarify and say, this doesn't make good sense to me, John, because if you're gonna go remote, we probably should have known that. And I was saying to Sarah earlier today, I've talked to each of you this week. I've talked to several of you several times this week. And I never leave the conversation feeling like, ugh, we're just, we're not on the same page here. That there is so much that happens and the ability to communicate uh with one another. And yes, if you feel like I've missed something, please pick up the phone and say, and I've uh called Bill twice this week. I hadn't called Bill in probably a month and a half. He goes, must be exciting in Marblehead, John. This is the second call this week. But having access to those resources and him knowing you and me getting to know you, please just always feel free to know that the phone works both ways. And if I fail to call you, I always welcome the call from you.
I just think, um, you know, John, it's I've said this to you too, but I just, you know, I'll say it for the benefit of the committee too, is that we're all learning each other's style here, right? Like, we're a new team, and this is a learning process. So it's like, I think we should just take this as you know, a lesson learned for all of us, not for you, but for all of us. Um, just so we're all, you know, we're all looking to be more effective and more efficient. So this is just, you know, we're just going to tweak as we go, as we keep kind of learning how we all work. That's why we did our team building session in November. And this is a crazy time, like, there is no normal here. So what maybe works in a, you know, a typical year, it kind of, some things are out the window this year too. So we've just, you know, I just think we're just tweaking as we go.
Yeah, I agree. I think, you know, yeah, we've had it on our our to-do list for quite a few years to want to get back to, like, what, you know, what's our purview? What's superintendent's purview? And, you know, each year, there's some new hurdles to that. But I think eventually, you know, we'll get there and and I think we're we're all learning this and and getting better.
Yes, Sarah, you and I have no idea what a normal year is. I would love to get there.
Yeah. All right, um, so moving along, it brings us to the subcommittee and liaisons updates. Um, I know, you know, we just presented a bunch of policies, so I think that sums up the policy subcommittee. Um, anybody else want to weigh in? Emily?
So, um, I would like to talk about Metco. Because I have lots to say, and it's really great. So we now have a new interim Metco director, Heidi Harris, who I um was able to meet. I've met with her a couple times this week. And she is awesome. And she was a Metco director in other districts for many, many years. She has done research um on desegregation, and now she's a consultant. But she was willing to fill our gap for the time being, which is so great. Um, and she is so motivated to help our program um get to where it can be. Um, and she's talked about creating uh practices and structures that we can set up. So as we move forward, we're always like, ready to go and have things in place and we'll just be able to keep our program moving forward. So she started December seventh, and she's already met with all the leaders of the school. She's met with Nan. Um, Nan hosted a Metco family chat to introduce Heidi to all Metco families. On Wednesday, we were part of a fundraising meeting for Metco because we have this awesome um Tyrone Bumper Scholarship at the high school, which I didn't know about. Um, and I don't know if a lot of people know about it, but we give um, there's money that's been raised that two students, a Metco student and a resident Marblehead student. It's an essay contest, and they write an essay about what the Metco program means for them. And it gets um judged, and the two winners get money, a money scholarship and a laptop. So we've now have this group to fundraise to fill that. I don't know, pot of to just make more and more money for things to do for the scholarship, but also to do for the Metco students um to support them. And so the other great thing that came out of that meeting is that we're going to try to do the cultural fest feast this year in the spring. Um, so there's a group of people working on that to make that happen. And then there's another group of us who are working on establishing fundraisers. So every year we'll have these standing fundraisers so that this um Metco bank account will always be full of money for everyone. Anyway, so it's just really exciting, and I'm just excited to that I get to be a part of it and help the program really. It's just really exciting to be able to see what this program can be for Marblehead. Oh, and Heidi would like to come to our meet, one of our meetings in January. She wasn't able to come tonight. Um, and she said she would do a presentation for us on what Metco is and what it can be. So if we can schedule that.
Yeah, absolutely. That'd be great. I will, uh, I'll probably meet with Lisa in the next few days to to plan the neck, the set, the the January seventh meeting. So we'll look at what makes most sense, either the seventh or whatever.
If that's possible.
Okay, all right, great. Good to know. The the seventh you want?
The seventeenth, isn't there one that?
Yes, that's the third, the third Thursday.
Oh, yes. Oh, sorry, sorry. Our second meeting in January.
Got it. John has an update to add.
No, I just want to share in Emily's enthusiasm, but just offer a clarification that we had a deficit in communications, so we hired a consultant to support communications. The same thing is for Metco. Heidi is a consultant coming in to support the work of our Metco program.
Great. I'm really glad to hear that.
I don't have a question, really. I just am so happy that that cultural fest is going to, you know, still plan to go forward because it was such a great event last year. I mean, it was one of the highlights of um of my year last year, so hopefully that can definitely kick off. And this might not be for this meeting, but just if we can reach out to the Metco PCO. Um, you know, and just make sure they know about these meetings that are happening too. Um, you know, I know it's, now that it's Zoom, they might be able to participate a little bit more, so, you know, if possible.
So Monique, um, the PCO president of Metco is now going to be coming to the central council meetings.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, so she's been looped in now, and the next one is in January.
Okay, cool.
Sarah?
Emily, do you have a sense of, you know, are most of our Metco students doing in-person learning or are more of them doing remote? And is the COVID in the unique set of circumstances with COVID and their need for transportation and everything? And how long they'd be spending on the bus, a a further barrier for the for those Metco students? I'm just curious of of, you know, how how they may be even more adversely affected by COVID.
Well, I I don't know the numbers of students who are doing um in-person or remote. Nan would be able to answer that better. Um, but I do know that we are bringing them in through a bus, and we have this amazing bus monitor. Delta, I think her name is. Heidi spoke really highly of her, and she is making the bus experience for our students um as best, I think, as it could be. She was really excited that we had her here and said, whatever we can do to keep her is what we need to do. So I don't know if Nan wants to answer that other question.
Well, I would, I would just like to add that at our family chat, I had asked um parents about the bus and how busing was working. Because we do have to keep the windows for air circulation uh slightly open. The parents were talking about how it is cold on the buses. And in a matter of days, we had uh organize a a um friends of Marblehead uh people coming together, and we have a embroidered, monogrammed Marblehead blanket, a bag and a hat for every child. Um, we'll be giving those out tomorrow. It was, it was phenomenal. So uh, the program is is su- super supportive when we ask. And so I think we've learned this year that we really want to get our Metco program out in the forefront and let people know what the needs are, and they're eager to to support. So the transportation has been fantastic. Greg has been coordinating for our Metco athletes, and we have a late bus that has been running without a hitch for those kids. Um, we do have most of our students in the hybrid model, but some in the, in a full remote setting. Uh, and we do have some Metco students that come five days a week for programming.
That's awesome.
I'm so excited about that blanket piece because I saw that in the newspaper that another district did that and was thinking we should do the same. So that's really exciting.
Done, done, and done.
Wonderful. All right, any other um subcommittees want to weigh in? Sarah?
Um, facilities met this Monday, and we talked about the facilities assessment is out to bid right now. Um, if everything goes according to plan, we hope to have that completed by mid-January, so we can get those that report and those good data points that we'll need to build. Um, we're the goal was to use that to build um our facilities master plan, which we really need to update, but as well as our um capital improvement ask. We did find out at the facilities meeting this week that the that the capital improvement ask had already been put in um by the district. Um, and after that meeting, Michelle sent that out to us to review. Uh, we will be tweaking that further. Um, because we obviously want to have information to build it on. Um, and that that was about it.
I'll just say that I spoke to Bill about that, and that was actually much earlier this year that town asked for capital request than they had in the past. And so that January timeframe of taking that list and tweaking it or prioritizing it is actually in line with what the committee did last year.
Great. Very good. Megan, anything to add for budget? Are we good there?
We did, we did meet. Uh, yeah, we met last week. Um, mostly we talked about scheduling, um, because I'm sure we're going to have to add a few meetings. So um John's going to work on putting a draft together that we could get out to the committee, you know, early January. Um, and John and Michelle are working with the principals and the budget owners to kind of, you know, get their get their request in order. So, you know, January is going to pick up for sure. I would expect, um, you know, early January, we start to I guess some rough numbers to start looking at and digging into, and then um, and then, you know, we're, we're off. January, February, always fun times.
Absolutely.
A question on that, Megan. Um, at the SAC, we discussed that they haven't started to dig in and look at new math curriculums yet, yet. So are you guys going to have a a holder for a new math curriculum? And if so, what will you be using as a driver?
Probably a question for John and Michelle.
Sure. Michelle and I actually have had that exact conversation with both of the principals that we've met with, and we have two more meetings um on Monday uh for, it will probably be a pre-K to eight math curriculum adoption, and so we will put a placeholder in the budget for that.
Great. All right, uh, I think that's it. David, any uh building project updates this time around? You're on mute.
I I do, so I, at our previous, at our last meeting, I talked about the GMP or the Guaranteed Maximum Price, the building committee met, voted. It was submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority promptly. And on Monday, we did get a reply from the MSBA, what results from the guaranteed maximum price is what's called a project funding agreement amendment. But in our case, um the amendment will actually be one hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars less than what our budget was. So the awarded GMP is is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars less, and that will get updated and put into the, you know, the system that's called ProPay that tracks all of the invoices and the reimbursements related to the project. So that's um that's a really significant milestone to be um on budget. And also, you know, within the GMP, there is the project schedule, and Gilbane is um, you know, looking to deliver the school for our September opening. So um as we've been talking about at the beginning about remote learning and uh hybrid learning. Um, COVID certainly could play a role in in that, but right now, we've been very fortunate. And um as we move indoors, uh Gilbane continues to with with their experience on uh many projects other, other than just this one. Um, they have very stringent protocol in place, and we're working very closely with all of our subcontractors. Um, you know, all of the prerequisites for coming to work and uh the various things related to COVID. And, you know, so far, so far, so good. And as we move indoors, there'll be a continued focus on that for sure. There's been um one or two instances where our vendors outside of the project are having some COVID challenges. And just to point out, the one, one is as an example, the the elevator uh vendor that we're procuring our elevator from um is experiencing some delays, but it's not a delay that will um impact any of the um milestones. Right now, we're still ahead of schedule as as for when we expected the elevator in, and those delays will be somewhat minor. And as an example, Gilbane mentioned, it's a two-story school and not having the, sometimes elevators are used during construction, but um, you know, if if there is a delay. So that that's the only um delay that we've experienced when it comes to But, you know, if if there is a delay, so that that's the only delay that we've experienced when it comes to the procurement of products and materials. And of course, we had our first big snowstorm and today, so that created a couple of challenges. And people should note, the notices have been out there and it's been approved through the through the building department and through the police department as allowed with our construction project. Snow removal will start a little bit earlier than seven o'clock, so the site can be prepped and ready to go. And those notices have been put out on the webpage, but so far, so good. Everything's, everything's tracking and moving, moving in the right direction. And I, I think the last time we met, I don't, you know, we, we've done a walkabout with the superintendent Ralph Wallace and myself to, you know, to visit the site and, you know, we'll, we'll continue to do that and look to get the building committee on the property in the first of the new year because certainly, you know, being there, you know, the pitches are great that we get, but being on the site, it's just tremendous to see the progress that's that's going on. And I'll let Sarah talk a little bit about, I know there's a lot of work going on on the finishes and the interior with with the architect.
So the mosaic working group will be meeting to talk with the artists on Monday, I believe. Emily, correct? I'm up. And then we're, I was going back and forth with Gene, trying to find a time for the interiors working group to get together again. He let me know, I think yesterday or the day before, he was hoping for Friday. We've sent some times back and forth. He just got back to me like a half an hour before this meeting, so I don't know if we'll fit that meeting in for tomorrow. But and then hopefully by in the next couple of weeks, we'll get that tied up and it's moving well. One question I I want to point out is, we're, David said, we are on track for the September, possibly. We're not guaranteeing anybody anything, but the possibility of September. I believe customarily, calendar comes up in January. So we might want to, you know, look at that and have a conversation, have David have a conversation of the likelihood that they think that they're on track for that September because where we start school at the end of August, you know, is this year maybe to push back that start and consolidate our schedule so that we don't have three days on a day off, three days on a day off, those those first five weeks of school like we've had in the past. And then we facilitate opening our doors at the new school versus, you know, a two-week, three-week in move. So that might be a deeper conversation we just want to have in place before we vote the calendar or open that discussion.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. Very exciting as always. All right, so that takes us to any new business out there. All right, and I don't, Sarah?
Has there been a discussion at the reopening committees ever of having a letter home that there's been a positive case in your class for COVID? I mean, we get the, I'm sure you've all read this. They've gotten the emails about this. That we get the letter home about lice. We get it for strep. We get all, we get all these letters for all this stuff. It seems like why would this communicable disease be different than the flu or the strep letter? So it it might be just one that people might want to have because where people are doing this in-person learning and wanting to maintain that, they may have a unique set of circumstances that they would talk over with their physician if they got that letter and say, you know what, this week, we're gonna, we're gonna stay home because we have a unique set of circumstances here.
We have not had that conversation yet, so.
We can add it.
Okay, great. All right, and there was no correspondence to the best of my knowledge to to get to you guys. So that will lead us to adjournment at nine thirty-three.
Thank you. Happy holidays to everybody.
Happy holidays. Last night of Hanukkah tonight.